No, not the round one, the flat one.
Looks like a lot of stuff.
This one over here.
You can lift it up even higher. Remember, man.
He has a meeting.
Last person to sit there was a real one.
Okay, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular session of the City of Littleton City Council, December 1st, 2015. I'd like to call the roll of Cor Kefner.
Mayor Beckman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brinkman.
Here.
Councilmember Cernanik.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Hopping.
Here.
Councilmember Valdez.
Present.
Can you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, the agenda was posted and presented to us. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll proceed with that agenda. And it's time for public comment. The clerk will be bringing me the sign-up sheets. Public comment is an opportunity for someone to express opinions, ask questions that are not part of the public meeting. There are two opportunities normally. Today, we have just one person who would like to make public comments, so we'll be able to take care of that immediately. But in those cases where we have a heavy load of signees who would like to speak, we may break it to before the meeting and after the meeting in order to be able to progress with the formal part of the meeting on a timely basis. An immediate response should not be expected. Anyone who would like to speak during either the public comment session now or the one that would be later if we were to have a second one needs to sign up on these green sheets. We have one person who signed up today, and that's Christie. Christie, would you like to address? Christie, you have three minutes, and it's on the timer right here to know.
Good evening. My name is Christie Woodyard. I'm a citizen here in Littleton, and I was chosen by the Mrs. Colorado America Pageant to represent the City of Littleton. And so I'm just coming to introduce myself and asking really for sponsorship. And the pageant's coming up in April, and so there's an interview section and a swimsuit and evening gown section as well. But my purpose here is I really truly want to be the face of Littleton since I am having that and wearing that across the banner, and I'm going to be wearing it on stage. So I'm just coming to get the support from the city. And this is my daughter Shelby. She's a fifth grader at Centennial Academy, so.
Christie, did we get your name? I'm sorry.
Christie Woodyard.
Thank you. Christie, this is quite an honor for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And the information that you're requesting and the information that you've given to the clerk will get a chance to look at.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
When is the competition, state competition?
It is April 16th.
All right, cool.
At the Ellie Cockens Opera House.
All right, thank you.
Great. And congratulations.
Yeah. Tonight, we have 11 items on the consent agenda, and we have no other items for business in the rest of the agenda other than our reports. So I'm going to read the consent agenda items and go through them and then ask for a motion at the end. Starting with the consent agenda item 5A. Consent agenda item 5A is an ordinance on first reading amending ordinance number 95, series of 2015, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for all municipal purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2016, and ending December 31st, 2016, scheduling the public hearing for December 15th at 6:30 p.m. Pull that, please.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Clark did.
Sorry, sorry.
5B. Consent agenda item 5B is an ordinance on first reading amending ordinance number 35, series of 2014, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for all municipal purposes for fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2015, and ending December 31st, 2015, scheduling the public hearing for December 15th, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. Pull that, please. Agenda item 5C is an ordinance on first reading amending sections 641, 6475, and 9110 concerning aggressive begging and solicitation on or near streets or highways, scheduling the public hearing for December 15th, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. Pull that one. Consent item 5D is an ordinance on first reading approving an agreement with Lockheed Martin Corporation for fire protection and emergency medical services, scheduling the public hearing for December 15th, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. Pull that, please. Consent agenda item 5E is an ordinance on first reading awarding and approving a construction contract for the fire station number 19 with Golden Triangle Construction Incorporated, scheduling the public hearing for December 15th, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. Pull that one. Consent agenda item 5F is an ordinance on first reading approving a lease agreement between the City of Littleton and Motorola Solutions Incorporated for radio equipment, scheduling the public hearing for December 15th, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. Consent agenda 5G is an ordinance on first reading approving a third amendment to the lease for 1221 West Mineral Avenue, scheduling the public hearing for December 15th, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. Consent agenda item 5H is a resolution approving a grant agreement with the State of Colorado to fund design standards and guidelines for the Louthen Heights Historic District. Pull that one, please. Consent agenda item 5I is ID 15-318, approving the certification of the November 3rd, 2015 minutes. Consent agenda item 5J is ID 319, approving the certification of the November 17th, 2015 minutes. Consent agenda item 5K is ID 320, approving the certification of the November 10th, 2015 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of consent agenda items 5F, 5G, 5I, 5J, and 5K.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so going back down the consent agenda items, which were pulled, council member Clark for item 5A.
All right, this is an amendment to the budget that's basically, looks like it's oriented around the new fire station at Trailmark. We're being asked to approve a first reading for an amendment to the budget when we don't have a copy of the agreement with Lockheed Martin. We don't have a copy of the agreement with Littleton Fire Protection District. We really don't know how much either one of them is going to contribute to the costs. We don't know how many calls there are to Lockheed Martin. We don't know how this is going to affect or whether the station and the crew there will respond in the Highlands Ranch. If it does, how we're going to be reimbursed with that. I don't know how the annual costs of operation for the fire station are being calculated. There's half a million dollars difference between what's presented in this first reading, what was presented in a study that I got off of Trailmark's website, and the fire department has a third figure for what the annual operation costs are. I just think that I can't vote on something where there's almost no information about what it actually is that we're being asked to approve.
Would you like to make a motion?
No. I'd like to vote against it. Somebody else wants to move to approve it. Go ahead.
I move to approve on first reading the ordinance amending ordinance number 95, series 2015, known as the Annual Appropriations Bill for all municipal purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016, and to schedule the public hearing on December 15, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. in the council chambers.
Second.
Still have a question.
Councilmember.
So would the answers to councilmember Clark's questions be available before the second reading? Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. Are you ready to prepare to vote?
I'm sorry, I do have a comment. I'm sorry.
Sure. Councilmember Valdez.
Thank you. As far as the concerns that Councilman Clark brought up, we will definitely have that stuff in time.
It's already out, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you ready to vote? Councilmember Clark.
You know, with an issue as complex as this and with the number of questions that we have, I'd normally expect this to go through a study session so that we could have our questions addressed, that the information would be presented to us in advance. It's pretty clear that's not going to happen. So the result is going to be at our next regular meeting, we're going to spend an inordinate amount of time getting questions answered and asked. It would normally happen in a study session that will lengthen the amount of time, and then we will complain about citizens coming down and taking too much time making presentations in front of us. I think the proper way to handle this is to have this information presented at a study session for the council actually to make a determination that they want to go forward rather than the staff or somebody making a determination that they want to go forward, finding out that there's drawings being published in the Littleton Report and that this is being advertised by the city manager and the Denver Post and the Littleton Report also without any decision on council's part, as far as I know, without any information being presented to council. So I think it's an inappropriate sequence. I think handling something like this, first time that we get the information, is that second reading at a public hearing is completely inappropriate.
Do you like to make a motion?
Pardon? Do you like to make a motion? A motion's already on here.
Motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
I'd like to convince you all to vote no.
So the motion that's on the floor is the consent agenda motion?
No.
Motion to approve.
To approve 5A.
Right.
Which is just this budget item.
So we could, under Robert's rules, we could table this. We could move to table and then allow a study session?
There's a motion on the table right now, so that motion either needs to be withdrawn or voted on.
I'm sorry.
There's a motion on the table that's been moved and seconded, so that motion would either need to be withdrawn.
But we could move to table that motion to a future date?
Yes.
Right? And have a study session after that future date?
Correct.
Okay. So I move to table the motion.
So what we need to do is vote on the motion that's on the floor. If the motion passes, it passes. If it fails, then we could introduce a second motion. Is that correct?
No, I thought of a motion.
Hold on just a second. I'm going to cancel your votes. Correct. At this point, you could have a motion to table or postpone to a date certain, and this would require that consideration of the main motion be delayed until a certain stated time for, among other reasons, obtaining more information. A future date shall be set when the subject is considered.
So you'd have to pick a date that's far enough in advance that you know a study session would happen.
July 12th is your next study session.
Excuse me?
No, I'm sorry, January 12th.
So it would be the next study session, January 12th? So.
Seventeenth.
Right. No, nineteenth. So I move to table the motion until January 19th.
Second. At this time, we have a motion in a second to postpone, no, to schedule a study session. Let me make sure I state this correctly, on January 19th to discuss this.
No.
No, you're moving to have the motion of the second reading to January 19th.
And the idea being we would have a study session on the 12th.
We're not voting on that.
I want to clarify that. So the motion is to postpone second reading to January 19th?
Table. No.
I gotta hear it again, then.
The motion is to table consideration of approval of the first reading and scheduling the second reading until January 19th. And that on January 19th, then you would schedule a public hearing for two weeks from then, which was probably a March date.
When would the first hea-?
February.
When would the vote for the first hearing that we're doing tonight?
It would be on January 19th. And then you would have the public hearing in February.
That's what I'm hearing, okay.
But delays it a little over a month.
Do we have?
Does this a chance to discuss?
Do we have clarity? And can I, can we, can you say it one more time so we understand for sure?
This is a motion to table consideration of whether to schedule a public hearing until January 19th. So at the January 19th meeting, we would bring this ordinance back to you, and the motion was to pass it on first reading and schedule the public hearing. We would obviously have to move that public hearing to February 2nd.
Okay, are you ready? Do we have any discussion? May I? Any further discussion?
So is there time for a study session or that we can discuss some of this information? What does our, the schedule look like in there? And Mr. Clark, that is your intent, too, is to have a study session where we can actually talk about this.
Certainly. So January 12th would be your first opportunity.
January 12th would be the.
Which is why the motion was for consideration of first reading on January 19th.
12th would be our study session. Okay. Because I think something this kind of, this large certainly requires more discussion. And when I opened it up and I was reading it this past week, I was a little bit surprised that, you know, this is really almost the first time I've heard of this large thing that we're going to appropriate here. So I'm game with, I'm good with a study session where we can discuss it a little bit more in depth. That's it, thank you.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is the one to postpone to the future dates, as we discussed.
To table, to table.
And it's table to the future dates that we've discussed. So that is, that is the motion on the floor at this time. Are you ready to vote?
The vote is three in favor with councilmember Brinkman, councilmember Beckman, councilmember Cernanik, and councilmember Hopping voting no. The motion fails, three to four.
Okay, so now we go back to the original motion.
Lights are still on. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion of the original motion? Because we have a motion in a second.
Can we repeat the motion in a second?
Approval of first reading the ordinance, amending ordinance number 95, series 2015, known as the Annual Appropriations Bill for all municipal purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016, and to schedule the public hearing on December 15, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers.
And we have a second.
So can we have a question on that? So is it possible to schedule the second reading, the public hearing, for the date in January and still have a study session so we could have more questions and discussion?
Yes, you can make that motion. I think that's the motion that just failed.
Well, no, the motion that just failed was to delay the first reading.
Yeah.
What I'm looking for is more opportunity to get, to have discussion, not necessarily opposing something, but just to have more discussion of the issue.
You'd have to make a motion to reschedule this because this motion moves us to a second reading on December 15th.
So you'd have to move the second reading to the 19th of January.
Okay, so I could amend this motion to move the second reading to January 19th.
Correct.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to move the second reading of this to January 19th. Discussion? Ready for a vote?
The vote is three in favor with councilmember Brinkman, councilmember Beckman, councilmember Cernanik, and councilmember Hopping voting no. The motion fails, three to four.
We're back to the original motion. The original motion as we have on our agendas and as was read by councilmember Brinkman and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for the vote?
Lights are on.
Lights are on.
The vote is six in favor, sorry, five in favor with councilmember Clark and councilmember Valdez voting no. The motion carries, five to two.
Okay, we're moving to consent agenda item 5B. Councilmember Clark.
Yes, I've got a question, actually, a couple of questions. One is, which line item was the architectural drawings and site selection paid for for the Trailmark Fire Station? I'm assuming that came out of the 2015 budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Doug Farman, Finance Director. That was paid out of the Capital Projects Fund, which is Fund Number 34. I can get you the exact account number if you need that, but I don't have that this evening.
Okay. Would you bring that?
Sure.
Two weeks from now, assuming this gets it that far?
Definitely.
Second question is, it looks like, I don't see any formal approval that the council ever did for a street skate plan. And we've got $200,000, the budget being amended, added $200,000 appropriation for a street skate plan that I don't see was ever approved.
That was discussed at a council meeting, and I'm trying to pull up.
In June, but the council never voted.
It was in June, and I don't, I don't know if the exact dollar amount was discussed. It's not your question, but it was discussed at a council meeting to move forward with that project.
Well, when I went back and looked at the council meeting, the conclusion was that there was going to be a contract brought back and apparently an amendment for the budget, but I don't ever see where the council voted to do a street skate. So have we already spent the money?
We have not. We did bring the contract back. We'd have to find the dates for you and.
Okay.
Get that information for you.
Appreciate that, please.
Do we have any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve on first reading the ordinance amending ordinance number 38, series 2014, known as the Annual Appropriations Bill for all municipal purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2015, and ending December 31, 2015, and to schedule the second hearing on December 15, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. in council chamber.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor with councilmember Clark voting no. The motion carries, six to one.
Next item is council consent agenda item 5C. Councilmember Clark.
I just pulled this because I wanted to vote no on it.
I move to approve on first reading the ordinance amending section 6-4-1, 6-4-75, and 9-1-10 concerning aggressive begging and solicitation near streets or highways, and to schedule a public hearing on December 15, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. in the council chamber.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion of this item?
So I do have a question. So I'm curious about, we've got sidewalks and so forth, but are sidewalks and some of the special areas next to roads that don't have sidewalks bicyclists, rollerbladers, skateboarders use, they would not be covered if somebody interfered with them?
Correct. This only covers roadways where vehicle traffic goes along, and I have to defer to the police about whether those bicyclists and rollerbladers should be on the sidewalks, but it doesn't cover that. Although it does cover if you're blocking passageway of someone when you're soliciting, that amendment is in there.
Okay, because there are, there's at least one major street that doesn't have sidewalks, and that was part of what made me think of that. I mean, people do bike and rollerblade and skateboard and so forth on the street I'm thinking of. So maybe you could meditate on that a little to see whether or not you think we could incorporate that into this or just wait and see if issues arise.
Okay, I'll follow up with you because I'm not sure I understand your question, but I'll follow up with you so that I can.
Thank you.
Provide good information in two weeks.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Just a comment on this. The modification to the existing statutes is there to reduce the city's liability in this, and so I'd urge support.
this, and so I'd urge support.
We have a motion in a second. Are you ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor with Councilmember Clark, voting no. The motion carries, six to one.
The next item is consent agenda item 5D. Councilmember Clark.
This is a ordinance to approve an agreement with Martin Marietta, and there is no agreement. I don't know how we can be brought a ordinance on first reading to approve something that we don't have a copy of. Furthermore, on the council communication, which is coming from the fire department, it says the revenue collected from this contract for services would offset the city's annual costs for Fire Station 19, which is different than the information that the Finance Director is presenting to us, different by at least half a million dollars. So, I don't know whose figures are correct here, once again.
The Martin, the Lockheed Martin contract is on the back of that summary that I emailed you last week and I laid out today.
Well, I downloaded the packet from the website on Friday, and it's not available.
Well, I emailed it, that was emailed separately. I didn't get that until Monday. And I emailed that separately to each of the council. It is on the website now, and it's in the back of the packet that is laying at your podium.
It could be the packet didn't get distributed. Do we have...
I don't have the packet.
It was emailed, we, oh, got it.
I, I guess my expectation is that we get the information for the packet at the time the packet comes out, so that we have enough time to read it before we get to the council meeting, so. Thank you, Wendy. I don't want to be reading agreements from the bench as we're getting ready to vote on them.
Any other comment? Councilmember Clark.
Pardon?
Do you have any other further comment?
No.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve on first reading the ordinance approving an agreement with Lockheed Martin Corporation for fire protection and emergency medical services, and to schedule a public hearing on December 15, 2015, at 6:30 PM in the council chamber.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there discussion? Are you ready to vote?
The vote is five in favor with Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Valdez, voting no. The motion carries, five to two.
This is consent agenda item 5E. Councilmember Clark.
How much has already been spent on the, this process so far?
Good evening, Council. Mark Ralph, Public Works Director. I don't have an exact figure today, but I certainly could provide that here in the very near term for council.
Okay, why did we spend anything without the council approving or authorizing this?
I was directed to proceed with this project as quickly as I can and to kind of manage the process the best I could.
So, Mr. City Manager?
We have been working on the strategic plan for the fire department for several months, if not over a year now, and the contract with Lockheed Martin was the impetus to move this out of the gate. Contract with Lockheed would start in, their desire is mid-March, and so we proceeded along this to a place where we could bring this to the council and have some level of general support from the council for it. So, we have expended some funds in anticipation of this moving forward. Councilmember Stallman, representing the council on the management committee, along with our fire partners, are in support of this station, and it felt like it was appropriate action to move forward with this. And we have expended limited funds up until the point of where we could bring this a comprehensive package to the city council for approval.
So, before you went to council, you went to the Trailmark Neighborhood and the Denver Post and announced that we were going to do a fire station. Expended funds, creating a drawing, and I assume site selection, it says in here, out of a line item that we don't know where it comes from.
Well, it comes out of the capital fund, and we have discretion within the staff for that capital fund. And the drawings were not, it was not a go-to the Trailmark Neighborhood. We were asked to update the Trailmark Neighborhood, and we did that, and we had council members who participated in those conversations, and then we were asked for a report by the Denver Post.
Okay, I guess the proper time to take up how we transfer funds would be in council comments rather than on this item. Because I believe you have to get council permission to transfer funds from one item to another in the, in the budget, and I don't know that you can transfer it to a non-existent expenditure.
If you're talking about line items, we can, we're not transferring between funds if that's what you're asking, paying for it out of the capital fund.
All right.
I move to approve the ordinance on first reading, awarding, and approving a construction contract for Fire Station 19 with Golden Triangle Construction, Inc., and to set a public hearing for December 15, 2015, at 6:30 PM in the council chamber.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? Are you ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor with Councilmember Clark, voting no. The motion carries unanimously, sorry, the motion carries, six to one.
The next item is consent agenda 5H. Councilmember Clark.
It looks to me like we're being asked to approve a grant, but the, Dennis? Please. How you doing? It looks like we're being asked to approve a historic grant, but the, but the statement of work appears that stuff's already been done on it?
No.
Dennis, could you announce who you are?
Dennis Wayne with the Community Development Department. No work has been done on this yet. We can't do any work until we actually have a contract signed by the city and by the state, and so that's what this is. We were awarded a grant through a competitive process with the state.
Because the, on exhibit C1, it has the list of submittals, it has interim report in August, second interim report in September of this year, so has this just not been updated?
It's been updated. We had a change of staff at the state, and so things have been delayed.
Okay. But you'll get this updated.
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I move to approve the resolution approving a grant agreement with the state of Colorado to fund design standards and guidelines for the Lothian Heights Historic District.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
That completes our items on the consent agenda. We have no ordinances for a second reading or public hearing. That brings us to item seven on the agenda, which is general business. I have nothing that was added to the agenda for that purpose, so we go to the opportunities for comments and reports. We've completed the public, the public comment in the beginning of the session. So, going to comments and reports, let's start on my right, Councilmember Cole.
No report, except I hope everybody had as nice a vacation as I did, actually, and also I hope everybody considers attending the Holiday Eve at the museum on December 13th in the evening. That's one of the nicest events in the city, but you do have to buy tickets, and sometimes they sell out, so do plan to buy your ticket soon. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark.
I think we probably need to clarify at some point what appropriation could be transferred and what can't. When I'm looking at section 78 of the charter, which is titled "Transfers Appropriation", it says the city manager with consent of the council may at any time transfer any unencumbered appropriation balance or portion thereof from one classification of expenditure to another within the same department, office, or agency. Capital Projects Fund, the whole point of having a Capital Projects Fund is to list the projects individually, and so if we're transferring it from some project that we are doing to some other project, there has to be a line item for that project to do it. Otherwise, we're inappropriately spending. We're spending something out of one line item for a project that that line item isn't intended for, and that makes the whole concept of the council approving the budget kind of broken. So, I am waiting to hear, I guess, two weeks from now, which line item the money was taken from for the work that happened on the fire station. Thank you.
Councilmember Valdez.
Thank you. Just a reminder that the boards and commissions' applications are coming in January, is that right, Street Clerk?
The applications opened today on the website, and you can go in under council and board and commissions. First one is apply, and they're due on January 31st of 2016.
And a second point, since I'm on boards and commission, planning commission hadn't had, or board haven't had a meeting in over a month, or about a month, so my expectation is that January, that canceling of those meetings will be few. We've had far too many over the last couple of years, and I keep hearing we're going to change that, but we haven't. So, I'm really hoping that we can utilize that board the way they should be used.
Planning board.
Planning board. Thank you.
Councilmember Sernanek.
Thank you. The mayor was invited as well, but I met with the district director for the Boy Scouts of America, talking about opportunities within the city as well as the region for both projects and ongoing involvement on the part of the Boy Scouts, trying to fill out some of their information, and so we may see some additional activity coming in that direction. Also, with Project Recycle, been working with the Littleton Public Schools on a possible bike donation for, it's mostly focused at the moment on fifth graders, and hopefully it will turn into an annual program, so Superintendent Ewart, as well as Kathleen Ambron, are both pretty excited about that. And so, sharing that with the board, we'll keep you up, or council, and keep you updated on that. And at last month's Dr. Cog Board meeting, there was an update on the Transportation Reauthorization Bill, which provides the funding that Dr. Cog allocates out, and we have two planning projects that, that have that. The hope has been, and supported both by the Colorado Municipal League as well as the MPOs across the state, to have a transportation reauthorization that would have a longer fixed period so that it's not interim extensions, because interim extensions lead to inefficient contracts, so that there ends up being a contingency risk in those, so it's less than great dollars on that. And the current status is that the bill is in conference between the House and the Senate, but the latest language is "subject to annual appropriation," which basically moves it back to a very short-term period, which would end up being inefficient. So, to the extent that we can continue to encourage our whole congressional delegation from Colorado, as well as the two senators, to stand firm on that, and they've been all pretty much advocates signing a joint letter on that, and so that's something to be aware of. And then with regard to area agency on aging, I sit on the advisory committee on aging, and we received an update on the Older Americans Act, which the Colorado delegation, along with a number of other states, are looking to make a fairer allocation of that, of those dollars. They've at least gotten to the point now where they've moved it up to the 2010 census rather than the year 2000 census, which is good news, but there's still a number of items to be ironed out on that front. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Brinkman? Jerry, I'm sorry, Jerry?
Or Bill.
Bill, Bill. Bill, I'm sorry, I forgot you, Dan.
It's okay, I'm far down here. First of all, I'd like to commend Mark Ralph. You have taken the burden of Christmas lights on Main Street, and I was in my office, which fronts on Main Street, Friday night, and kind of got involved in something, and all of a sudden I hear this "ooh" out the window, and everybody was applauding the lights going on. It's a magical thing that makes, part of what makes Littleton special, and so congratulations on getting it right your first time out of the chute. Also, I'd like to support Jerry on the board and commission appointments. I think that with those applications open, if anybody in this room or listening would, has any interest in getting involved in the city at all, this is a wonderful way to do it. I was blown away by the quality of applicants that we had who came in who are positive-thinking people, who really want to help the city and move it forward in a way that makes it a better and more special place. So, come on and be part of that process, and it's also a good place to get feeders for city council, because we are always looking for good candidates. So, those are my comments for tonight.
Not sure what he meant by that, really. I thought we had some pretty good candidates.
Mayor Proton Brinkman?
I have no report.
I will wait till after the city manager, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as many of you, I think, are aware, our staff was very busy this weekend. We had two major events. The Candlelight Walk was on a frigid Friday night, and even though the temperatures were cold, there was a great crowd of several thousand people, and we had a couple of additions to Santa's appearance, and everyone really seemed to like the surprises that we had. The elf crawl on Saturday night sold out about two weeks ago. If you recall, we had 400 tickets last year. This year, we moved it up to 500, and so we had over 500 people dressed in holiday characters, wearing lighted elf hats, that's what we handed out as part of it, and we even had a large abominable snowman participate in the event, so it was great. We did put this event together in support of Small Business Saturday and in partnership with the downtown merchants, and they were very pleased with the event and our participation in it. You're invited to help us celebrate the promotion of three Littleton police officers at a ceremony on Friday, December 11th, 1:30 PM, in the police training room. Corporal Sean Carlson will be promoted to sergeant, Officers Rick Redman and Rod Martinez will be promoted to corporal. We had planning staff attend the city of Centennial District 1 and 2 meetings to update, along with the developers' representative updating them on the Littleton Village project, which I know Councilmember Sernanek had asked us to do not too long, not too long ago. The Littleton calendar is printed, and everyone should have a copy at your, at your seat, and there's a bunch in the back for anyone else who would like to take a copy with them tonight. A Holiday's Eve is Sunday, December 13th, at 5:30 at the Littleton Museum, and tickets are available for that. And then I would reiterate, just because we're reiterating, boards and commissions' applications, the more the merrier. It's an opportunity for citizens to participate in their local government, and an opportunity for the council to sit in the community room and interview for hours and hours and learn, learn about many of you as you apply. And then finally, we produced a video with our partners at South Plant Park about good trail etiquette when you're out with your four-legged friends. It's a two-minute and 48-second video, so sit back, relax, and watch Dog On It. It's a two-minute and forty-eight-second video, so sit back, relax, and watch Dog On It.
This is Long Leash Larry. He doesn't seem to care about anyone but himself. And nothing seems to distract him from his phone. He sure ruined her day.
Oh, Dog On It!
I think he needs to learn to be more courteous while using public trails with his dog.
Dog On It! Miss, are you okay? What happened? Gosh, yeah, I think so. It's my shoulder. This guy, he had his dog on one of those long leashes, and I just didn't see it, and it made me crash. I am so sorry this has happened. You stay here, I'll get you medical attention. Thank you. Ranger Billy?
Yep.
There's been a bicycle accident. I've got nine-one-one on the way. I'll stay with her. You go get the guy responsible.
Okay, got it.
It looks like he's about to learn a lesson from Park Ranger Billy.
I just needed to contact you because when you're up on the trail, having your dog on such a long leash actually created an accident for one of our bicyclists.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And by letting your dog off-leash down here at the river, it really disrupts the wildlife habitat. Furthermore, by letting your dog defecate and not picking it up, it really pollutes the pristine environment that we're all trying hard to protect here.
I didn't realize.
We're all here for the same reason. We want to enjoy our parks and open spaces. If we all think about our actions a little bit while we're out here, it makes a much more enjoyable experience for everyone, and it helps protect our parks and open spaces.
Please pay attention to your surroundings. Keep your dog on a six-foot leash at all times. This ensures the safety of you and your dog, as well as other trail users, dogs, and wildlife. Always pick up after your dog. Dog waste pollutes the environment.
We can all enjoy our parks and trails and open space if we just follow some of the simple rules. These guidelines will help protect the land and the wildlife. This will ensure a pleasant experience for all of our visitors in the parks that we love. It will also ensure a positive experience for all. Dog On It! Stay tuned next time for our next episode about speeding bicyclists.
And this is on the heels, if you recall, Councilmember Brinkman had asked us to work several years ago with South Suburban to look at overall trail etiquette, and I know several of you, Councilmember Cole, participated in others, handing out water bottles and some of the bells and different things over the years, and so this, as you saw, this is part one in a continuation of that endeavor. So thank you very much, and Mayor, that's all I have this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, I was remiss in the location of the police ceremony on Friday, December eleventh, at one thirty. It's not here at the police training room, it's at Mission Hills Church, at one thirty. Apologize. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have just a couple of comments. One is, I remember when I was first learning to ride a motorcycle. That was a lot like tonight. So I know I'll do better the next time. Yeah, I made it down the road, but it wasn't real pretty. So thank you to the folks who helped me get through the first night of doing this. It's a real honor, but it's like riding a motorcycle. One of the ideas, we might want to put a calendar on the screen when we start talking about rescheduling, because for us to go into the calendar section, we lose what might be on the iPad, and then we get a little confused, or we go to a phone or whatever. It would be sure helpful to maybe put a calendar up on the screen if we get to rescheduling, that way we're all looking at the same thing. I want to mention that there was some discussion tonight about the budget and the, and the line items and the funds and the transfers and those kinds of things. I'm not sure at what point we could discuss that in maybe a study session, but down the road, that probably wouldn't be a bad preparation for the next budget or preparation for expenditures to understand how the different funds work, because sometimes we slip past those pretty quickly in the budget session, and we don't really get into the meat of why those lines are the way they are, or exactly what we can do. So just a thought, not a, not a staff requirement, but somewhere we could fit that in, I'm sure. I do want to try to raise the bar, and I guess that's what I'm saying every once in a while, on the boards and commissions and the scheduled meetings that they have, and what they do, and how they do it, and why they do it. Sometimes it could be training, sometimes it could be an orientation, it could be, you know, talking through a scenario that maybe isn't before them at the time, but could help them understand some of the ordinances and those kinds of things. I think we can raise the bar so that there are no canceled meetings. Finally, I want to mention the Candlelight Walk, and it really was, it was the Thirty-Second Annual Candlelight Walk. It was, it was a really good one. We had a little bit more in the way of events. The kids were absolutely excited about the pre-Santa presentation and some of those things, so it was really a great effort. Thank you very much. And that's all I have, and with that, tonight's meeting is adjourned. All right.